Good afternoon, everyone. It's great to see you all. Hope everyone had a good Memorial Day weekend. Today, the purpose of our meeting is twofold. We're going to approve the budget, hopefully, and discuss some personnel recommendations. So before we get started, we're going to go ahead and certify the meeting today. Every public body shall give notice of the date, time, and location of its meetings, other than special emergency or continued meetings, at least three working days in advance by posting such notice on its official public government website, if any, placing such notice in a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted, and planning such notice at the office of the clerk of the body, or in the case of a public body that has no clerk, at the office of the chief administrator. Okay, let's see. Reasonable notice under the circumstances of special emergency or continued meeting shall be given contemporaneously with the notice provided to the members of the policy body conducting the meeting. Ms. Tanner, has today's school board meeting been properly certified?
Yes, Madam Chair. On May 11, 2020, notice was provided fulfilling all criteria VA Code, Chapter 37.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tanner. I duly call this meeting to order. In calling this meeting to order, I would like, I'm not going to read it as I did last time, but it will be noted in the minutes, the purpose of our electronic meeting, why we are not in our physical location, and that is due to the coronavirus and the emergency order that we are under. And this comment will be placed in the minutes officially, and as we all see, it is under Board Docs for the public to view. Next item on the agenda, roll call. Item 1.03, Ms. Tanner.
She's muted. Okay, Basine?
Here.
Campson?
Here.
Lanton?
Present.
Jordan?
Here.
Martin?
She was just here. Maybe she's having a technical issue.
Okay, Smith?
Here.
Okay, Martin? We're doing a roll call, Ms. Martin.
I don't see her logged, like, I don't see her...
Yeah, she's coming back now.
Her name just popped up.
Yeah.
Martin? Her video's out.
Yeah, it typically takes a second just to get the audio. There she is. Ms. Martin?
Oh. Present.
Present.
There you go.
Engaged.
Present. We're good? Everyone's good technology-wise? Everyone can hear one another? Okay. All right. So, item 1.04, at our last meeting, we said that we were going to come back to the budget discussion and have a meeting dedicated to this. Before we go into that, I first want to allow Dr. Burtsong some opening comments, and then we will proceed with our budget presentation, a very short presentation, as I understand, and then we will go into the motion that is presented. Thank you, Dr. Burtsong.
Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, Ms. Clayton, members of the board and members of our community. I appreciate this opportunity to provide a brief look ahead as we rapidly move toward the end of this historic school year. In a matter of weeks, we will be celebrating the graduations of an estimated 1,663 seniors. These young men and women have worked extremely hard in their 13 years of schooling. Graduations are the culmination of those long and important journeys. Consequently, it was imperative for us to develop observances that would constitute appropriate, meaningful commendations to our students' collective achievements. I truly, truly believe we have accomplished that goal. Before I give a brief overview of those plans, I do want to acknowledge that face-to-face ceremonies involving a joyous coming together will always be the foremost desire in our hearts. That is why we do hope to hold such observances in August, if the circumstances permit. But in the meantime, this is what we've planned. All five high schools will hold virtual graduations on the exact date and time the original ceremonies would have been held. These ceremonies will be broadcast live on Channel 47 and livestreamed on the NPS website and archived afterwards. Most importantly, the ceremonies will individually acknowledge every graduate. They will also feature addresses from the school's valedictorians and salutatorians, as well as remarks from me and building principals. Each high school has created a special webpage to give shout-outs to our graduating seniors and to post celebratory comments. This page will be available for posts by no later than June the 4th. On June 11 and 12, each high school will host a special event whereby graduates will pick up their diplomas and graduation programs. We're also asking graduating seniors to take a photo of themselves in their caps and gowns posing at landmarks or places of interest in Norfolk. These photos will be included in a video montage called "Salute to Seniors" that will be posted on the NPS YouTube channel beginning the week of June 22. As you're aware, June 12 marks the last day of school. Once again, I want to thank the students, parents, guardians, administrators, staff, and other stakeholders of Norfolk Public Schools for their exceptional support. While we found ourselves building the airplane as we were flying it during the abrupt mandated closure of schools, we were still able to make sure it could soar. The same level of ingenuity and flexibility will still be required as we continue to plan for a new school year, even though at this time, we don't know what the operating rules will be. Finally, this afternoon, the administration will be providing the school board with a brief budget presentation. Last Friday, board members received a detailed PowerPoint presentation outlining how we recommended addressing the projected $13.2 million shortfall in fiscal year 2021. While Ms. Tal and I were faming from a long dissertation enumerating each element of the reduction plan, we anticipated that your prior review of the material provided will result in a substantive discussion. As always, we will be happy to address your questions and look forward to your ideas as well. Again, I thank the school board for their ongoing support and look forward to a productive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burtsong. We will go ahead and enter into the discussion, the budget discussion. Okay.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Clayton?
Okay, because we are in a formal meeting, and I will say that I did receive a call from my colleague, Mr. Jordan, in regards to the motion that was placed on the docket earlier. And as I had mentioned before, motion was placed there so that we would have something to move around. All motions have to always be in a positive, and then we'd be able to have discussion as a business item. So, with that, Madam Chair, I move that the school board amend its 20, March 25, 2020, approved, proposed fiscal year 2021 budget to reflect the superintendent's adjustments that indicate the decrease in anticipated revenues from the Commonwealth, Virginia, and the Norfolk City Council for fiscal year 2021.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Is there a second? I think, make sure that y'all are unmuted if you're gonna second.
I'll second it.
Second, okay. So, at this point in time, there's a motion on the floor, there is a second, there will be discussion regarding that. But, Mr. Clayton, I'm gonna actually ask you a question real quick. We do want to have a short presentation by Dr. Burtsong and staff. Are we permitted to have that presentation even with the motion and the second floor?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and proceed with the motion? And I do, I do see your hand up, Ms. Basine, but we're gonna go ahead and move towards the presentation first, and then we will go into the discussion. Is that following, is that following proper protocol, Mr. Clayton?
Yes.
That should be fine. Okay, Dr. Burtsong.
Good afternoon again. As I previously stated, we wanted an opportunity this afternoon to provide you an update. There were many questions asked about my recommendations, and I do believe that this presentation will cover many of the questions that have been posed. So, this presentation, it really mirrors what we provided to you the last time we met, and it also was updated to some, to include some information that you requested. So, Ms. Tanner, if you can go to the next slide. Again, this presentation highlights, Ms. Tanner, you can go to the next slide. Estimated operating revenue, my recommendations as funding priorities, as well as strategies that we use to balance the budget. We included some information about the CARES Act and then the overall school board's budget. So, we won't, next slide, please, Ms. Tanner. We won't go, some of the slides that we have already provided information to you about, we won't review those again, because, again, we reviewed these at the last minute, the last meeting. We provided you a definition of unalotment and budget reduction, Ms. Tanner. We also provided information on the next slide about budget amendments that were adopted by the General Assembly at the 2020 reconvene session, which we won't review again. And then on the next slide, we think it's important enough to review this information again, because we did share this information with you at the last minute, at the last meeting, I keep saying the last minute, at the last meeting. And so, I'm gonna ask Ms. Tal to once again review this information so that the board has a clear understanding of our estimated state revenue. Ms. Tal?
Thank you, Dr. Burtsong. Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clayton, school board members, and Dr. Burtsong. This slide demonstrates how the reduction was implemented by state revenue category in the reconvene session. The total state revenue for 2020 is $197.5 million, and the new total for 2021 is $203 million. That's an increase of $5.8 million over 2020, but a decrease of $5.2 million from what the school division was initially slated to receive pre-COVID-19. Karen, next slide, please. Last time, I shared with you a high-level update on the city funding. Today, I will share some information based on city council's approval of the budget on May 19, which requires the school board to make adjustments on the 2021 budget. Norfolk Public Schools has a revenue-sharing agreement with the city of Norfolk built on a formula of Norfolk Public Schools receiving 29.55% of 14 non-dedicated local tax revenue sources. This slide shows the development of revenue projections by the city. Initially, the school division's revenue share was projected to increase by $3 million for 2021. That is from $126 million in 2020 to $129 million for 2021. The $129 million was based on the city's initial estimate of $436.5 million of revenue sources. However, because of COVID-19, the final revenue projection was reduced by $27.1 million to $409.4, resulting in an $8 million reduction for NPS from the initial estimate, or $5 million reduction over the 2020 budget. Now, even though the focus of this presentation is the operating budget, it is also important to mention the Norfolk Public School CIP budget. The city has agreed to earmark $30 million in proceeds from the sale of Lambert's Point Golf Course for school maintenance project. This $30 million will be placed in the Sustainable Water Initiative for Tomorrow Fund, or the SWIFT Fund, and Norfolk Public Schools would receive $6 million per year for the next five years to fund major capital projects. However, should Norfolk Public Schools decide to use the SWIFT Fund for operating expenses or to offset revenue shortfall, the division must submit a request to city council for that purpose. Karen, next slide, please. This slide provides a snapshot of our revenue sources for 2021 from two standpoints. One is pre-COVID-19, that is the third column from the left, and the other is our current situation, the fourth column. The bottom line is our revised estimated revenue for 2021 is $337.1 million, an increase of $986,471 over 2020. Next slide, please. At this time, Dr. Burtsong will speak on her recommended priorities.
Again, I believe the top four priorities for the budget, what I'm recommending to you, as I did at the beginning of the budget season, include compensation, safety and security, additional resources for our schools, and building repairs and maintenance. Again, this is the same information that I provided to you in the last meeting, and so I won't go through those enumerated items. They, again, are listed on the next several slides that you will previously provided, but I do think it's important that you have an idea about our budget balancing strategies. And so, I'd like to bring your attention to that slide entitled "FY 2021 Budget Balancing Strategies." And Ms. Tal can lead the discussion in that area.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Burtsong. In the essence of time, I will skip some of the slides which detail the priorities addressed in the budget that the school board submitted to city council on April 1. They also detail those, Dr. Burtsong's revised recommendation between implementing needed increases and dealing with the demands of significant revenue reduction. I will proceed to the slide that shows the summary of how we balance the budget. Ms. Tanner, please proceed to Slide number 24, "Balancing the 2021 Budget Summary." Keep going, Slide number 24. Keep going. Okay, up, right there, thank you. As you recall, the school board's 2021 original budget was based on a projected $14 million revenue increase. That's $11 million from the state and $3 million from the city. This slide details how we address a $13 million reduction in projected revenue, yet managing to maintain many of the priorities included in the initial proposal. We eliminated certain priorities from the, from the original proposal, that's a reduction of $7.3 million. We eliminated vacant positions due to the decline in student enrollment, 800,000. Eliminated vacant bus driver position to offset costs of 15 bus assistants that will assist our special needs students, 300,000. We also reduced departmental budgets by 2.8 million. We are using stimulus and CIP funds, 1.1 million, and rebasing salaries and benefits and utilizing attrition savings, 5.2 million. All the above strategies are necessary to balance the budget while dealing with the demands of significant revenue reduction. Next slide, please. Congress on March 27 has approved the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security CARES Act, part of which was Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, or the ESR Fund. The ESR Fund is designed to help lessen the negative impact on the pandemic on public schools. Norfolk Public Schools stimulus funding is $27.7 million and is allocated proportionate to our 2019 Title I funding. A portion of this funding, 1.5 million, will be set aside to provide equitable services to students and teachers in private schools in Norfolk. The remaining balance of $11.2 million will be earmarked for Norfolk Public Schools. The performance period is from March 13, 2020 through September 30, 2022. Examples of how the stimulus funding can be used are also listed on this slide. It's the same information that was provided last time, so I will not read them. Next slide, please. In conclusion, it is recommended that the school board adopt the 2021 budgets to align with city council action taken on May 19 as follows. Operating Fund, $337,148,281. School Nutrition Fund, $20,200,000. Grants and Special Programs, $42 million. Capital Improvement Fund for Deferred Maintenance, $9 million. For a total of $408,348,281. We are also asking the school board to approve the stimulus fund in the amount of $12,665,678.94. Once you approve it, we will ask the city council to appropriate the funds. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, Dr. Gabriel, we are prepared to address questions and certainly have a discussion.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Dr. Burtsong, Ms. Tal, and to your staff for preparing the presentation, working so hard on the unexpected changes that are, we are receiving based on the financial crisis at hand from COVID-19. What I'd like to do is offer this time to my colleagues to provide remarks or questions with regards to the motion that we have at hand. Everyone will receive a total of five minutes, and that five minutes will include any question time that you have for the staff and administration. If there are still comments that need to be made after everyone has had their five-minute opportunity, then everyone will have an additional two minutes. And this is to keep us on track of time and to allow everyone to have the opportunity to share their thoughts. So, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor for the discussion with the motion on the floor right now. Okay, let me see here.
Are we doing it in alphabetical order, or are you gonna call on people?
I'm waiting for folks. If they have a question, raise their hand, so...
All right, my hand then.
Okay, all right, Ms. Canton. And we're gonna go ahead and start the timer then?
Thank you very much. You know, as I was looking over the revised budget that we received, I was sad to see that we had had to cut some things. Who would have ever predicted that this would happen? I know that all the board members all have the same focus, and that's what I've always said is to provide a high-quality education and a safe and secure environment. We all have the same goal. We have different training and experiences, and our pathway to that goal may not always be the same as each other, but we all, every one of us, are focused on that. And so, when I went to look through the budget, I had my own focuses too, and what were maybe a hill that I might want to die on, and it was definitely teacher raises. That was teacher raises and instructional support for our schools. And so, I was very happy to see that that had been protected with the cuts that had to be made, and that was pretty much a celebration for me, because we don't pay our teachers enough. And the first thing the state did, like they always do, is they cut promised raises to the teachers. So, I was very happy to see that that was preserved. And my second big priority was instructional support for our schools, especially in this time when we are all working so hard to come up with plans, well, certainly the superintendent and our staff are anyway. And I was very happy to see that, that the instructional specialist, the reading and math specialist, and the two new positions, the two instructional specialists that are going to STEM Academy, where we need to put some extra support to get our program there to match the splendor of our 21st century school that we have in that neighborhood. So, I was very, very excited to see that. And that was basically what I look at as school board goal one, working on the academics and the instructional part, what we could do to give that support. Safe and secure, I know everybody knows how excited I was that the budget was going to include something I've been working for, as have many elementary principals, and that was to get security staff into our elementary schools. It was a bitter pill to swallow to realize that those positions, most of them were cut, there were 30 positions, two were saved, of the KDA eight combined schools were definitely the priority schools to get it. I had, I knew that some of it would be gone. I would hoped to see maybe the schools that have mobile classrooms, which are always such a worry about security, but I do understand that we're not all gonna get the things that we really wanted. I've been working on it for 20 years. I can wait another year or two. I did talk to the superintendent about it briefly, and I did let her know that she's gonna see it on my priority list again next year, but I understand it was $1.1 million. And that's a lot of money for new positions in this kind of time. So, I've, you know, had a conversation with myself and realized that I have to let this go, because we have to get a budget that balances, and we've got the key things that we needed, which were the teachers raises, the instructional support, we've got the money coming from other sources for the CIP, our roofs and our leaking windows and those things that'll be fixed. So, I am fully prepared and fully committed to fully, 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 support the revised budget as presented to us by the superintendent today. It will have my support and my vote. And I'd be five minutes. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. Other members wishing to speak? Ms. Basine?
Okay. So, there, there are many strengths to this budget, but I do have a couple of questions around some of the items that I think, given this pandemic, are for me, first and foremost, on the priority list for me. For instance, the school counselors, do you anticipate using CARES Act funding for the school counselors going forward? That might help me understand or support, you know, the reduction in, in that category.
Mrs. Basine, one of the, in, in looking at those positions, we had hoped that that would not have been eliminated from the state budget, from the state's budget as an additional SOQ requirement, but the funding for that was, was not supported. But what we are able to do with this budget is to extend the contracts of all of the secondary counselors so that they can have the time during the summer to not only, you know, take care of some academic things, some student enrollment issues, but also to be there as support for our children. We've also, through the stimulus funds, I'd like to be able to provide some support for social emotional learning. I think that's extremely important, especially during this time. We're definitely gonna need some extra supports for our students and families, so that's definitely a priority. We also want to continue with making sure that we have a pipeline of school psychologists, and that will, will also be supported through the stimulus funds. So, those are just a couple of things that will be supported, but not specifically additional counseling positions.
Ms. Basine, you still have time. I can't tell from your screen if you're...
I think our screen froze.
Yes, it's frozen. I...
She's back. Can you, can you see me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. The other question is, do you anticipate, or do you have concerns around declining enrollment, given that we may actually see a bump in enrollment due to the economic impact of this, you know, COVID-19 on families who may be currently choosing to homeschool or private school their, their students?
I think that's, that's a, that's a great point, Mrs. Basine. We have been in discussion about that. I do believe that moving forward, that we will likely be able to provide, and we haven't named it yet, but, you know, it's some sort of NPS homeschooling program, because I'm very much aware that some parents are not, for whatever reason, we can have all of the supports in place, you know, you know, things at the school level taken care of, but parents may not feel comfortable with sending their children back to school. So, we would like to have a virtual program for, for parents who opt to keep their kids home for whatever reason. We have not ironed out the details of that program, but we would like to provide that as an option. And I do believe that we'll have a lot of families who are currently homeschooling their children. I think they will, will like this option, and they will enroll their children in Norfolk Public Schools. And I just believe that we have to be extremely flexible with the different scenarios that we're thinking of, but we certainly have thought of that.
Okay. All right, I will yield some time to my colleagues.
Okay, all right, 49 seconds. Okay, Mr. Jordan?
Yes, I'm gonna try to, oh, can, can you pause one second? I'd like to share, share my screen as a document like this. But I need them to allow me to share my screen.
Can you do it from your end?
Well, the host has to enable it.
Yes, okay.
One second, she's going to do it.
She's going to do it.
Or if you want to let somebody else go, you can come back to me at whatever point that, that, that the sharing screen is enabled.
Hold on one second, he's right here. Allow record. I think we may have it set as a security setting that only the host can share.
Okay, well, I'll just read it and I'll, I can, I'll email it to you later.
Okay.
So a couple of things. One, I'm, I think the, the public, you know, since we are public body meeting in the public, I think the, the process would be a little better if we were able to have full detail presentation and then go into discussion. But following this process that we have, where we have a motion on the floor, I'd like to recommend an amendment. So what I've done is taking the item where we have the projected decline in revenue and I have kept the enrollment, I'm sorry, decline enrollment as flat for, for our projection, which I calculated if we did that would leave us at, give us about $800,000. That enrollment would tie into both what Ms. Basin was just mentioning in terms of how parents may respond to the pandemic, but also with the growth in ESL students that we have seen in the northern part of our city that I'm not sure is calculated in those projections. So with that $800,000, I would restore the, the $500,000 associated with the counselor ratio, the $100,000 with the equity administrator, the $100,000 with the grant writer. I would then recommend that we use CARES Act funds to support the behavior specialist that we had and the attendance technicians. I'm basing those recommendations off of, I think our budget proposal was more pre-pandemic. I'm trying to deal with current pandemic and post pandemic and tie it to some of the objectives that I saw coming out of the state in terms of how school divisions should be addressing issues as part of this pandemic. They had four priority points. Strive to meet students' immediate needs first. I think these items meet that. Ensure equitable access to learning resources and provide adequate supports necessary for students to achieve success. I think my recommendations do that. Provide clear centralized and regulation, regular communications to all families. We have that underway. And then also begin developing a return to a learning equity plan. And so I think having that equity chief and the things that we've talked about also puts us in a position to that. So again, that would be using flat enrollment, current enrollment that we have rather than declining enrollment, which would bring $800,000 in additional revenue. Counselor ratio, 500,000, equity administrator, 100,000, grant writer, 100,000. Stillies, 100,000 in the operating budget for flexibility. And then use the CARES Act for the behavior specialists and attendance technicians. This would allow for our division to make sure that we can go out and keep our students engaged and keep them enrolled. And because of all the data that's coming out about the trauma, the challenges and other things that students are facing during the pandemic, I think having these behavior specialists and counselors and others would support that. The grant writer would help us with our revenue piece and equity piece, the equity administrator we've discussed previously. The other thing I would do is take the security officers that we have, that Ms. Campson mentioned for the K-8 schools and shift those, sift that to the, to the high schools. I think our data shows that we have a greater need at the high school level right now than we have at the, to identify K-8 schools. The other thing I would just mention for right now, I haven't seen a detailed breakdown of, of the stimulus funds. So I really don't have a good sense as to whether or not those stimulus funds are going to provide for the technology and professional development needs that, that we have right now with with the distance learning model and with the possibility that we may have a slow return. So I'm uncomfortable voting on the stimulus budget item without having those, without having those details. In, in my five minutes, I'll leave it at that and I'll come back later in the, in the two minutes. But again, my recommendation is $800,000 in operating funds to be used as I, as I described, plus the CARES Act funds to be used as I described.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Jordan. You have made an amendment to the motion on the floor. Is there a second to that amendment?
Point of order, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm questioning, and Mr. Jordan, nothing to you directly, but the depth and level of your amendment may not be germane in, in the sense that you're presenting it. Because you're making such a significant change to the, the proposed motion on the floor, and which is literally changing numbers. So I, I do have a point of inquiry, Madam Chair, to the superintendent. Dr. Birdsong, were you aware of any of these proposals today?
No, I wasn't aware of the proposals.
Okay, and did you have an opportunity to speak with Mr. Jordan at all?
Yes, Mr. Jordan and I did have a conversation yesterday. We had a two by two meeting.
All right. Just for, for the sake of, but I, I personally believe this based on my experience that it's a significant change. But I'll yield my, my point of order and allow us just to go through the process there. So Madam Chair, I'll, I'll pull it back. And I think Mr. Smith is trying to raise your hand.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clinton. So what I'd like to do is then, is there a second to the amendment to the motion on the floor?
I second that amendment.
Okay, you are seconding the amendment. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to put discussion time at two minutes for this amendment. And if there's anybody wishing to speak on this amendment, then they can do so now. So Ms. Tanner, please make sure you have the clock at two minutes. And then we will call for a question after the discussion has been exhausted. Ms. Campson.
I'm excited to hear that Mr. Jordan has found another $800,000 if that works out. And I guess all can update us on that. However, I would have liked, I wish that Mr. Jordan had shared it with us ahead, so I would have had a chance to go through it. With the amended version that we were discussing, I spent a long time going through that item by item so that I was familiar with what was there and whether or not I could support it as a whole, even if I didn't agree with every single thing. Getting this, I certainly don't agree with pulling, I don't know why it's so hard to get security in our lower grade schools for our youngest children, but I could support everything off the top of the bat because I wouldn't want to see that pulled. Finding more money and adding some things to it is one thing. Taking off things that are already there and substituting them someplace else would be disappointing to me, especially since those were the only two of 30 positions left that were saved. So that's my only concern here. I applaud his work, especially finding that that's wonderful if it works out. But I think that this is something that is like out of the blue and I don't have enough information even address it. So I have a concern because of those things. But I'm excited about the extra $800,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Campson.
Madam Chair, may I, may I speak?
Are you going to speak to her response? That'll be your two minutes.
That's fine. Yeah, ju- just, just for clarity to the board, so you know, Mr. Clint opened the meeting and talked about the, the phone call that I had with him. Really what I was hoping for was the customary process where the superintendent would have an opportunity in a workshop or work session portion to share with the board and the public all that she had learned from the city council action. We would have Q and A. And then after that, we would enter into a motion, so we would have an opportunity to discuss. Like all of you, I got this at the same time you all had, as Dr. Birdsong mentioned, I had the two by two. I really didn't know any other method of trying to put forward these items because on board docs, we already had a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation before the board had discussion. So this was the only manner that I knew in order to put forward the, the amendments following the rules and the procedures that we were, we were given. And Ms. Campson, I'm not, you know, like you said earlier, I'm not trying to die on a hill in terms of the K-8s versus the high schools. I just know in the, when we had the earlier discussion and we talked about some of the needs in Northview High School in particular, and some of the data that was coming out about the needs for high schools, my thought was is that we might need that initial support at the, at the high school level. But I'd be more than happy to figure out a way for us to have all of it if there's some way of doing so.
Mr. Clantons?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to point out a couple of things here. Mr. Jordan is correct. He did call me. But, Mr. Jordan, you never mentioned to me that you had a level of depth of amendments that you wanted to put forth. So I just wanted to put clarity on that one. And I'm not saying that I'm against any of the items that you're placing there, but I do raise caution like I did at our last board meeting in regards to making significant changes to our budget and with the potential, really of the financial uncertainty that we have. I would recommend to my colleagues that we approach this with the recommendation that the superintendent has already placed to us and that we also look at what our counterparts at the city council level are doing and with the city manager there, where they're coming back to review the budget and review finances throughout the year and look at what they've already said. They've taken some things out and if it looks like the revenue is coming back and the economy is getting better, we can place things back in. So based on that, I, I think that we should take that same approach considering that we don't have total control over our funding source. We can't just flip a switch and, and get money, but we have to cut or shift things. So my recommendation would be that we maintain the current budget recommendations and amendments that superintendent has provided to us and provided to us in a timely manner for us to digest and review. And I'm fine with those and that we keep an eye on, on the budget, which we do on a monthly basis. And if there's opportunities for us to make adjustments and to bring other things back and the, the finances look like that we can do that, that we would be good stewards at that particular point to, to move forward. So my recommendation is, my, my, to my colleagues is that to vote no on the amendment and to move forward with the recommendations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clinton. Okay, I just want to make sure that I am seeing it right. I see Dr. Birdsong's hand and I see Ms. Martin's hand. Ms. Smith and Ms. Basin, do either of you need to be in the queue? I just want to make sure I'm not missing you.
Yes, I have my hand raised.
Okay, I did not see that. And Ms. Basin also. Okay. So I'm gonna first start with Dr. Birdsong, then I'll go to Ms. Basin and then to Ms. Smith and then to Ms. Martin.
I, I just have a quick point of clarification. You know, Ms. Campson referred to some extra money. I, I just want you to understand that it's not extra money, Ms. Campson, that was found. It is just a different way of appropriating the money. It's not extra money that was found. And I also want to clarify that we did build this budget on at, at least, I want to say 119, 120 more children than what was projected. So we did think of that ahead of time. So just a point of clarity. There is no extra money and we did look at our projection and built this budget on more children than what has been projected for us.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong. Ms. Basin.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that, Dr. Birdsong. I, I want to share, you know, I have, I absolutely support, support the amendment and I'll tell you why. It's because, you know, I think that the disparities that, that exist, and I know we all are in agreement and, and understand this. You know, not only for our students who may not have had technology access, but also for our students with disabilities and our ESL students. And that is a, a huge concern and I think is the pressing top priority for me. And to have the behavior specialists covered, you know, at least through the CARES Act is something that I support. I also think the equity chief again is something that we should really consider having in place. And I think this proposal that Mr. Jordan has put forward as an amendment is, is one that that makes me more comfortable in supporting the budget as, as proposed. And so I'd really, you know, like for my colleagues to, to consider and think about those things in support of that amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. I too support the amendment. As Dr. Birdsong said, it's not additional money that's being found. It's just the reallocation of the resources, using them in a different fashion. We do have, it's not a major change though, and we do have the expertise on staff to look at this and make the adjustments. I will say, Ms. Campson has for a long time advocated for the security officers at the, the K-8 level and at those two schools, actually at all the schools. My primary support of this is with the behavior specialist. We're going to really need that, especially during this time of the pandemic, as well as the diversity specialist. So if we're able to reallocate the resources in a way that will allow us to fit those few positions in the budget, I would support it and I would support the security officers being at either place.
Thank you very much, Ms. Smith.
The original or the recommended?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Ms. Martin.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted to comment earlier on about, about the, the declining enrollment. And so thank you, Dr. Birdsong, for explaining that you did actually bring in 120 more children into the equation. Because, you know, this school district has been losing children for the past decade. And so I'm very hesitant to, to tack on, you know, extra funds, assuming that we're going to have an increase in enrollment. So, and, and and of course, you know, I'd love to have all of these things, but I think that we need to err on, on the conservative side and then keep this, these items tabled for, for the future discussion if we see that things have changed because we still don't know what September's going to look like. And as far as providing counselors, I would really like to look at some other options and part, you know, some community partnerships possibly with CHKD to bring in some counselors for our children and really develop some relationships in our community to kind of defray some of those costs and, and something that's consistent and, and valuable for, for our schools. That's why I'll be supporting Dr. Birdsong's adjusted budget.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Okay, everybody has had an opportunity to speak. Doctor, I see your hand, Dr. Birdsong. Go ahead. You're on mute. You're on mute. Hold on. Yeah. Start over again.
To Ms. Martin's point, truly, and, and, and Mr. Jordan and I, and I had this conversation yesterday. This is a novel virus that we're, we're dealing with. Things are changing day to day, week to week, hour to hour. And there are some things that we just don't know right now. I would like to caution the board about putting additional positions within.
I can't hear Dr. Birdsong.
You can't hear me? Can everyone else hear me?
I can hear.
Yes.
I can hear.
All right. I, I just wanted to caution the board about, you know, putting things that we may not be able to sustain. You know, because the stimuli in, into the budget, because the stimulus funds will only be here for two years. And after that, we will no longer have access to those funds as far as we, we know. So I just want to caution you about building a budget on multiple additional positions that we may not be able to sustain.
Mr. Clanton and then.
I have like 20 seconds left.
You did. I have it written down. You have 23 seconds.
It's a question to Dr. Birdsong, because I think I heard this. Is there a?
Is there a possibility that if we continue to lose revenue the way we are in the city, that city council could come back and adjust their allocation to us at any point in time?
It's my understanding that they're going to be reviewing this for at least six months, and they could come back, you know, and share that, you know, we may have access to additional funds. But again, we just don't know that. We, you know, we don't know what that will look like.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. So I would just like to share that there isn't anything that I disagree with in the amendment for, that Mr. Jordan has brought forward. However, I am very concerned that even in the context of having the two by two, that these items, especially in the range of almost a million dollars, were not discussed and reviewed with the superintendent, who is the person who has her finger on the pulse with how funds are allocated, how they're distributed, and how, how they're put forth and used and utilized. So I will be voting no on the amendment. I think that what Dr. Birdsong has put forth already in, in the budget is the best thing that we have at this point in time. And certainly, if more funds do become available, then we can come back and have a discussion as to how those funds are appropriated. So again, this is not in disagreement with, and Ms. Tanner, you can have my timer up as well, because I should get two minutes, too. This is not disagreeing with the, the items that are being recommended, but at this point in time, I'm not ready to support the amendment. So we're gonna go ahead and call the question.
I, I just want to point, because Ms. Bassin did have her hand up. I'm not quite sure if you remember how much time she had left.
Let me see here. Let's see here. I-
Ms. Bassin, you can have 30 seconds.
Okay, real quick. Can you clarify, too? I had a question, I was looking back at my notes, about the SWIFT fund balance. Do you know, is there any flexibility in how that money can be used? Like, I know the $6 million over five years, but given this pandemic and the, the significant needs of our students, has there been any discussion about any flexibility around that and whether the requesting funds to be used for operating expenses, if there's been any kind of a-
That's your time, Ms. Bassin.
Yes.
Dr. Birdsong?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Bassin. We did outline in this presentation that there is some flexibility with that. However, as noted by the council, they would be requesting that if we're not going to use it or utilize the funds for CIP purposes, that that information be, be shared with the city. And so, a- as you know, Ms. Bassin, we have just a lot of building maintenance needs and capital improvement needs. And so we, we really would like to utilize that funding to take care of our buildings that have some critical needs right now.
Absolutely.
But yes, there is that flexibility.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bassin. Hold on, we are gonna go ahead and call the question right now, and then we will get back to the budget discussion to keep us on track.
Madam Chair, can we just clarify for everyone what we're voting on?
Yes, we are voting on an amendment proposed by Mr. Jordan and seconded by Ms. Bassin. The amendment is roughly an $800,000 change to the proposed amended budget to the school board from Dr. Birdsong, asked by Mr. Jordan. So that is what we are voting for, voting on right now.
Just to, just to clarify, if I may, the, it is $800,000, is based upon having the enrollment numbers being flat as currently projected. And it also includes the recommendation of using CAREX funds for behavior specialists and attendance technicians, based upon the criteria that we received that CAREX could be, funds could be used.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Tanner, if you could call the roll?
Yes. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
No.
Clanton?
Nay.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Nay.
Smith?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Nay. Okay, the amendment fails. We are going to go back to our discussion of the original motion on the floor. That motion, again, Ms. Campson has spoken, Ms. Bassin has spoken, Mr. Jordan has spoken, and we have Mr. Clanton, Ms. Smith, and myself. So, Ms. Smith, Mr. Clanton, any words on discussion with the original motion on the floor?
No.
Mr. Clanton?
Madam Chair, Ms. Tanner- I, first and foremost, I want to say thank you to the administration for bringing this back to us here. We've had several discussions around it, and in our last meeting, even yielding to and, and agreeing with my colleagues that we needed additional time to be able to look at this. Council approved their budget last Tuesday, and so here we are today, really trying to keep in mind that we are dealing with an unprecedented time, very much so like in 2008, 2009, when we were dealing with the depression. We had a budget that was very robust, that was gonna get us back to pre-recession time funding levels. And I was looking at a report, the annual report from 2008, 2009 for Norfolk Public Schools. And at that time, all five of our high schools were fully accredited. Of the nine middle schools, three of them were not receiving full accreditation. And all of our elementary schools, but one, was not fully accredited. That was Lindenwood Elementary School. And when I began to look at this report, and I began to think at some of the highlights that came out of that, the thing that resonated was during that time, we put the resources where they needed to be. And that was in the classroom, supporting education on a daily basis, and making sure that our students had the resources that they needed. Here we are now, again, being faced with the decisions, which is, you know, if you don't have great leaders in the class, great leaders in the schoolhouse, and great teachers in the classroom, that's where the rubber meets the road. And Ms. Campson has made sure that we, we've heard that, and I've seen that, having been a part of this, this district. So I appreciate the fact that we're not getting everything that we need. But like the superintendent has stated in the recommendations, that we're keeping compensation because we need the best. We need to let our employees know that we appreciate them and that we value them, and that the work that they do deserves to be compensated. And I still think to this day that teachers are up there on the level of lawyers and doctors and everything else in many other countries around the world value them as such. And I implore that Norfolk Public Schools begin to be that example, that we raise teachers to the level of the value that they need to be. That safety and security, that we are placing those funds back in there, additional resources to our schools, and of course, building repairs and maintenance. I'm happy and pleased to see that Booker T. Washington, Northview High School, and the programs that they have here, and all throughout, and that council, you know, though it's not the 17, almost $17 million that we requested in maintenance, that we still have $9 million from maintenance funds that will go back to our schools. But that does not negate the fact that we need to continue to push forward to ensure that we have robust facilities, recommendation for how do we move forward and rebuild Norfolk Public Schools for our next generation of students. So again, and thank you, Dr. Birdsong, thank you to your team for the work that you have put into this. Budgets, and particularly in this situation, are never very easy. It's great when we can have a budget and get fully funded, and we keep moving. But we're, we're not alone. And this is not a thing that centralized Norfolk Public Schools. Every single school district across this country is facing the challenges that we are. And so I implore the fact that we have great leadership and our superintendent, that she's putting together a great team, and those who are working in there, and our teachers and our administrators, and my colleagues on this board, that we can have this discourse and not always agree, but not to be disagreeable, and most importantly, that we put our students first. So thank you, Madam Chair, and I yield back my time.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
I don't believe I had a comment, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, then. Okay, well, then I will close. I will be voting in support of the amended budget. I know that when the budget first came out, it was very robust. I was very happy to see so many things that were in direct connection with the school building. That includes the math and reading specialist, the additional assistant principal for St. Helena, the additional compensation for staff, including the step increase and the raises. I know that the division traditionally takes on some of the healthcare benefits from the staff, and because the healthcare benefits are rising, we are looking at sharing those expenses. And that also goes in part of the total compensation package for our teachers. But I do agree with my colleagues, Ms. Clanton and Ms. Campson, what they have said about truly valuing the teachers in the building and the principals. Without them, we cannot close achievement gaps. We cannot identify students who have needs at home. We cannot connect with our parents. And so they are the ones where we have to truly put a lot of responsibility on and allow them to be our eyes for these young learners that we have. And then you can add on top of that the additional benefits that Dr. Birdsong has built in, growing your own psychologist, extending the time of our counselors. I definitely would like to have more counselors. I would love to have a behavioral therapist program. But we also can leverage, as Ms. Martin has said, the great partnerships that we have right here in our own backyard. I mean, it's not a secret that CHKD is building an entire mental health facility. There's no reason why we can't focus on education and we can turn to our partners to help us focus on the incredible growing needs of mental health concerns that we have for our children. And then let's not forget the building maintenance needs. I am so proud that Dr. Birdsong and of our group really came together with one voice to support the maintenance needs that we have in our buildings. And that starts from the courageous conversations that we had, starting with Sherwood Forest, to the opinion piece put out by the Norfolk Council, PTA, and then the countless public comments that we received. And let's not forget, we did tour Booker T. Washington and Morey High School last year with our senators and delegates to show them the dire need of the deferred maintenance and how we are having to shoulder the burden of those maintenance needs. And no student or staff member wants to be in a building where you're constantly leaking, you're concerned about rodents, you're concerned about air quality, and all of that. We want to have a high-functioning environment and a high-functioning workforce. And so this budget is, is, is not the be-all, end-all, and it, and it isn't the wish list that we all wanted, but I do think it is a step in the right direction. And I think it was very thoughtfully crafted and very geared towards students and families. And then finally, I will, I'll just say that I truly respect the working relationship that Dr. Birdsong and her team has with our city council parts. Our funding is directly dependent upon the state. We receive 80% of our funds from the state, and those are tax dollars. The remainder of that is a small percentage from the federal funds and then a percentage from the city. Year after year, the city has stepped up to try to help bridge a growing need that we have within our school division. When you have a high percentage of students who are on free and reduced lunch, you're going to have higher needs. And certainly, we want, we want to make sure that every student who is starting pre-K is starting at the same starting point. And it takes more in order to do that. And so I will just have to, to, to give my city council colleagues credit for listening, being flexible with us with the budget. I know that they would want to give us more if they had it, and I look forward to the ongoing conversations that we will be having with them. Because certainly, as we navigate through COVID-19, which, Dr. Birdsong, you are absolutely correct, this is a novel virus. We did not know the effects that it had on children initially, but now, you know, even as a physician, we are now worrying about this multi-system inflammatory disease state with children. And so we have to be flexible. And I'm very ready to navigate this process with my colleagues, and I will be supporting the budget for all the reasons that I had mentioned above. So, Ms. Tanner, go ahead and call the question.
Bassin? You vote, you're voting, correct?
Yes, we are voting.
Okay. Bassin?
Nay.
Campson?
Fully supporting the superintendent's recommendations for the budget. I'm voting yes.
Clanton?
Yay.
Jordan?
Yeah, I'm mute, too.
Sorry, nay.
Martin?
Aye.
Smith?
I just believe we have the time to take a second look at the suggestions and come back with a revised recommendation. The budget is well put together. You can tell a lot of effort went into it. I just don't think the ask is unreasonable, so no.
Gabriel?
Aye. And the motion carries. All right, thank you all very much. What we'll go ahead and do now is we will have a motion on the floor to enter into closed session.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Clanton?
I move that we move into executive closed session.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Tanner, if you could please read the motion?
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for a discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment and the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees, et cetera, of the Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection 1 of the above cited code section. The subject of this portion of the session will be a personnel docket for hiring a specific candidate for employment, consultation with legal counsel, and briefing by staff members concerning actual probable litigation or specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsection 7 and 8 of the above cited code section. The subjects of this portion of the session are briefing by staff and consultation with counsel concerning the matter identified above and discussion of awarding of credit towards continuing contracts.
Bassin?
Is, well, let me take it-
Aye. Sorry. Okay.
Okay. Bassin, okay, Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Okay, let's just give ourselves a few minutes to get logged into the closed session portion. Thank you, Ms. Tanner.
Thank you.
To certify the closed session, or to come out of closed session?
Madam Chair, I move that we come out of closed session.
I second.
Okay. Mr. Clanton made the motion, Ms. Martin seconded. Okay?
A resolution certifying executive meeting of the school board of the City of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the City of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on the state pursuant to an affirmative reported vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Control requires the certification by the school board of the City of Norfolk that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, it be resolved that the board of the City of Norfolk hereby certifies it to test its best capability and knowledge only business topic matters, largely exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, were discussed and executed. This certification resolution applies, and only such probably business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting, were heard, assessed, or confirmed by the school board of the City of Norfolk. Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you, Ms. Tanner. Without objection, I would like to just extend our meeting to five, five by five minutes, because we had on the agenda that our meeting would adjourn at 5:30. If you could just note that, Ms. Tanner, in the minutes-
Madam Chair?
That we support the personnel docket as discussed.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Campson has made the motion, Mr. Clanton has seconded. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hand. Ms. Tanner, if you could please call the roll?
Bassin?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. We will see each other again on June the third. This meeting is adjourned.
Aye.
Aye.